Thank you sir.
In the time of this, we will be remembering the life divine who is on fire for our life. She, Allah, she Aravindar. We will thank her and say good bye to them in their prayers. In the time of this, we will be remembering every thought of our mind. We will talk about every emotion of them in prayers. Good bye, good bye. Life Divine, Chapter 20, we have seen. Death, Desire, Incapacity. This is paragraph six. We have seen this session. In this session, we will talk about it. What did we see in this session? Let us briefly remember. What does this chapter mean? Why does the death of man exist? Why does he have to be tortured? Why does the incapacity of man exist? Incapacity means that he has to be tortured. He is in an inadequate condition. That is the incapacity of this. Why is this condition exist in man? That is what God has said. It is what led to this concept. That is what God has said in this chapter. Our life is independent. It is not possible for us to live in a world of this condition. If the world of this condition exists, then the world is a twisted, 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 twisted world. That is why we must live in a twisted, twisted, twisted world. Life itself is darkened and divided, said by Allah. That is why the memory of the twisted world, the twisted world, weakness, doubt, ignorance, is necessary. The reasons for this struggle, the reason for this struggle, is that the world is a twisted, twisted, twisted world. It is a twisted, twisted, twisted world. Every person with a personal desire is a twisted, twisted, twisted world. That is also a doubt. It is a doubt that you have to live in a doubt. What is the reason for this doubt? It is a doubt that you have to live in a twisted, twisted, twisted world. What is the reason for this doubt? It is a doubt that your government is a bad government. Your government is a bad government. It is a bad government. It is a bad government. This is what we have said. It is what we have said. It is what we have said. That is why the personal desire of a person is a personal desire. The thoughts of the other person are a personal desire. Personal desire, personal knowledge, personal consciousness, personal happiness, all these things are a personal life force. These are all a personal life force. But what is the reason for this? The consciousness form of the one. A person with a personal desire is a personal desire. But there is no doubt that this is a personal desire. There is no doubt that this is a personal desire. There is no doubt that this is a personal desire. There is no doubt that this is a personal desire. There is no doubt that this is a personal desire. That is why we have said. The personal desire is a personal desire. The personal desire is a personal desire. Why is this? Self limitation of the individual soul. The personal desire of a person is a personal desire. There is one personal life force. What is the reason for this? That is because of the personal desire. That is because of the personal desire. That is why the personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. But there is no doubt that this is a personal life force. But there is no doubt that this is a personal life force. When I am in the personal life force, my thoughts, my words, everything is in this. When I am in the personal life force, my thoughts, my words, everything is in this. When I am in the personal life force, my thoughts, my words, everything is in this. That is why the personal consciousness of this person is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This is a great story of a fairy tale. A fairy tale of a personal desire. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This personal life force is a twisted, 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 twisted world. Because we have seen this in the past. This personal desire is a personal desire. But this personal life force is a personal desire. What is the reason for this? This is the evil spirits. They have a personal desire. This is a personal desire. When the personal desire of a person is a personal desire, what is the reason for this? This is a personal desire. This is a personal desire. This is a personal desire. That is why this personal desire is a desire. How is this desire? When the personal desire is a personal desire, it is a personal desire. When the personal desire is a personal desire, the evil spirits, the evil spirits, they are a personal desire. The personal desire of a person is a personal desire. The personal desire of a person is a personal desire. This is the evil spirit. What does Allah say? This is a gradual awakening to self. Your body is a personal body. This is a personal life force. This is a personal consciousness. This is a personal consciousness. Life force is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. What is the reason for this? This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. That is why the desire of a person is a personal desire. That is why the desire of a person is a personal desire. This personal life force is a personal life force. This 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 is a personal life force. What is the reason for this? This is a personal life force. 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 It is the manifestation of the divine in cosmic existence. That is why this personal life force is a personal life force. That is what Allah has said. This is a personal life force. 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 That is why this is a personal life force. Why? This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. It is a divided, individualized life and force. This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. Why is this? This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. Because this is a personal life force. Because this is a personal life force. What is the meaning? Master of all forces. The force of the Lord. This is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This is a twisted, 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 twisted world. This is a personal desire. It would be impossible for a divided and individualized consciousness with a divided, individualized and therefore limited power and will to be the master of the all force. That is what Allah has said. Why is this? All will can do that. All will is a personal desire. This 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 is a personal desire. That is why Allah has said. There is a main point. This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. This is a personal desire. 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 These three badges of its limitation, said by Allah. What is the reason for this? Death, Desire, Incapacity. Why is this? This is a personal life force. That is why this is a personal life force. 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 These three persons have three personal desires. That is what Allah has said. This is the end of this paragraph.
Thank you sir.
Thank you sir. This is the end of paragraph five. Let us read the original paragraph six. I am sorry, we have to read paragraph seven. Sorry, we have to read paragraph six. I will tell you about this. This memory is a two-person relationship. This is a two-person relationship. That is what Allah has said. One, because of the personal desire. The next, because of the personal consciousness. This personal life force is the universal life force. This is the personal life force. This is the personal life force. This is the personal life force. What is the reason for this? Every person has a personal life force. This is 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 a personal life force. That is why this is alive. At the same time, this is a personal life force. We have seen this in the Upanishad. What is it? All matter is food. My thoughts are food. This is a food. The eater eating is himself eaten. Whether or not this is a personal desire, it is a personal life force. What is the reason for this? This is a personal life force. 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 What is going on? There is no difference between a normal and a strange life. Capacity of consumption, capacity of providing food for the life outside. This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. That is why the personal consciousness of this person is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. This is a personal life force. That is why this is a personal life force. That is why this is a personal life force. That is why this is a personal life force. That is why this is a personal life force. 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 Why? Because of a new birth or a new desire. This is a personal life force. This is the end of paragraph seven. Let us read this paragraph seven.
Sir, where is it?
Please say sir.
You have said. MP Pandit said. He has been in London for four days. You have said the same thing. I will read it.
Sir, please.
She Aravindar's son said. The memory of a person is a personal life force. His daily life, how the memory of her is made today, is a source for the life of her. It is a food. If a person is born, if a person is born, it is impossible to reach the future without reaching the future. Otherwise, if a person is born, it is impossible to reach the future without reaching the future. Otherwise, it is impossible to reach the future without reaching the future. Otherwise, it is impossible to reach the future without reaching the future. Now you have said exactly the same thing.
Thank you sir. Thank you. Before we go to the end of this session. MP Pandit said. The talks on the life divine. In the chapter twenty, we are watching. This subject has a explanation. We have seen this. It is very clear. We have seen it. Everything is very clear. It is clear. Let us start. Then we will go to the end. Who is reading this? The explanation of the MP Pandit. Are you reading this? Do you take it?
Sorry sir, I did not take it.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Okay. One minute. We are reading.
We have discussed a very satisfying truth. That death is not the end of things. But why at all is that necessary? Why does that come about? If the life force issues from the universal life. And the universal life is a projection of the will post of such ananda. How was it come about? हो वाल इट कम अबाउट द इंडिविजुअल लाइफ पोर्स इस सब्जेक्ट डे देयर आर तू और थ्री फैक्टर्स विथ इट्स प्लेन फर्स्ट इट इस इन द वेरी नेचर ऑफ थिंग द द लाइफ एनर्जी विथ एक्ट इन द फिजिकल बॉडी पीस इट्सेल्फ अपऑन द बॉडी द फिजिकल बॉडी इन टर्न डिराइज एंड ड्रॉप्स सत्तर फ्रॉम द लाइफ पोर्स इट्स अ तू वे प्रोसेस द ईटर ईटिंग इस ईटन आदु उपनिष्ठ से सो लाइफ पोर्स ईट्स मैटर एंड इन द वेरी प्रोसेस इट इस ईटन द बॉडी टेक फूड एंड पॉइंट्स इट नर्विशिंग बिकॉज़ द लाइफ पोर्स इन द पोर्ड वेदर इट इस वेजिटिव पोर्ड और अनिमल पोर्ड दर इस इन इट द कंसंट्रेशन ऑफ लाइफ एनर्जी विथ नर्विशियर द फिजिकल बॉडी बट इन अब्सोविंग डेट लाइफ पोर्स एंड डाइजेस्टिंग इट कमथिंग इन द बॉडी वेस्ट आउट्स सो एवं इन ईटिंग द बॉडी इट्सेल्फ इस बिंग ईटन दिस ट्रुथ ओवर लिमिटेड लाइफ पोर्स ईटिंग एंड अलसो गेटिंग ईटन बाय द बॉडी इस अ पीछा आता वस्टे ऑफ एवॉल्यूशन सेकंड इट इस डी रिलेशन बिटवीन द इंडिविजुअल लाइफ पोर्स एंड द लाइफ पोर्स इंडिविजुअलाइज इन अदर देयर इस ऑलवेज अ वॉर ए क्लास गोइंग ऑफ बिटवीन दिस डिफरेंट लाइफ पोर्स इफ योर लाइफ इस विक एंड बी माय लाइफ पोर्स इस द पॉइंट यू वास सोंग एंड आई विक योर लाइफ पोर्स ड्रॉप्स फॉर माइंड दिस कंटिन्यू इंटरचेंज बिटवीन लाइफ पोर्सेस इस अनदर फैक्टर ऑफ कंसंट्रेशन थर्ड द लाइफ पोर्स इट्सेल्फ अन नंबर ऑफ ऑपरेशन इन द फिजिकल बॉडी डाइजेशन स्प्रिडिंग गोइंग आउट इफ देयर इस द स्लाइडर्स इनबैलेंस दिस हार्मनी बिटवीन दिस डिफरेंट ऑपरेशन ऑफ लाइफ पोर्स देयर इस डिस्टर्बेंस एंड देयर इस डिजीज हार्मनी हस टी रेस्टोर्ड अंटील देयर इस डू द लाइफ पोर्स फंक्शन एंड अन सर्टेन रेट ऑफ इंपैक्ट इट नर्विशियर लेफ्ट इट फ्लोस लेफ्ट थैंक यू
थैंक यू सर वन मोर वन मोर वन मोर
द लास्ट फैक्टर इस डी रिलेशन बिटवीन द ऑल फोर्स इन द यूनिवर्स एंड इंडिविजुअल पोर्स देयर बोथ आर सम्मान इन हार्मनी देयर इस ऑलवेज अ क्लास बिकॉज़ एग डाउन बाय माय अम्बिशन पर बाय माय इगो माय लाइफ पोर्स में ट्राई टू काब आउट मोर फ्रॉम द टेरिटरी और द ऑल लाइफ देयर इस अंटाइटल टू इन अन स्टेट ऑफ इग्नरेंस दिस कॉज़र्स अन सर्टेन रिएक्शन एंड रिजेंप्ट इन द ऑल लाइफ
थैंक यू अर्थम सर थैंक यू थैंक यू इनके वंदु श्री एमपी पंडित वंदु रम्बा अर्घ्य गुलकी इन्दर एदनाल वंदु डेथ अप्पडिंगरद मारणम इन इन इनकिन्द्र निगर्किन्द्र अब्दीन इन आ मारणम इन इन द येन अवसीय इरेंडल द नमक के केल्व एड़किन्द्र द लाइफ फोर्स इन बद आदु इन द यूनिवर्सल प्रबंज प्रबंज वार्व यूनिवर्सल लाइफ आदनुड़िया ओर वेलिपार दान द यूनिवर्सल फोर्स अप्पडिंगर यूनिवर्सल लाइफ अप्पडिंगरद द सच्चिदानंद आदनुड़िया चितसक्ति विल्ड फोर्स आदनुड़िया ओर वेलिपार दान अप्पडिरकुम बोरुद येन वंदु ओर तनीपट्टा वार्व वंदु मारणम इनकिन्द्र उनरुक आधु तन्ने उठपड़त्त वेंटम इन द केड वे एड़किन्द्र इदक कोंद भगवान वंदु श्री एमपी पंडित मुदलावत आह कोरिपट्टम कारण अब्दीन इन द लाइफ एनर्जी अब्दीन आधु वंदु नम्मलोड़िया उड़म्बल आधु दान वेल से लाइफ एनर्जी दान वेल से नम्मलक सक्ति एड़किन्द्र अदेश लाइफ एनर्जी एन से इन्द्र इन राल नम्मलोड़िया अंदर उडल इनकिन्द्र अंदर मैटर जडम आधयुम उनवाह आधु उठकोल्किन्द्र नम्मलोड़िया उडल फिजिकल बॉडी आधु आदनुड़िया कादरक्क तेवियान सक्ति इन द लाइफ फोर्स आदनुड़िया इरुद्द आधु पेरिकिन्द्र इधि वंदु ओर तू वे प्रोसेस इदता वंदु उपनिष्ठ तल एन उपनिष्ठ 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 एवा र कोरिकिन्द्र इन राल द ईटर ईटिंग इस ईटन आदलाल इन द लाइफ फोर्स इन बद जडपरुले आधु उन्गिन्द्र जडपुल ना नम्मलोड़िया उडल वंदु ओर जडपरुल जडपरुल दान लिया मैटर दान सो आधि उनवाह उन्गिन्द्र इन द प्रोसेसल इन द लाइफ फोर्स आदुम उनवाह उठकोल्ला पढ़ीकिन्द्र नम्मलोड़िया उडल वंदु आदरक्क तेवियान सक्ति काह उनवय उठकोल्किन्द्र येन अंदर उनव वंदु आदरक्कु सक्ति एड़किन्द्र इन राल इन द लाइफ फोर्स वंदु अंदर उनविल इरिकिन्द्र आदनाल दान वंदु आधु वंदु नम्मलोड़िया उडलकु वंदु सक्ति एड़किन्द्र इन राल नम्म उनव उन्नम उनवाह उन्नक्कुड़िया अंदर अवैहली अंदर लाइफ फोर्स इरिकिन्द्र आधु वंदु ओर तावर उनवाह इरकट्टुम इल्ल अनिमल फूड अनिमल फूड आह इरकट्टुम इधि एला तिलमी द कंसंट्रेशन ऑफ लाइफ एनर्जी इरिकिन्द्र आधु दान नम्मलोड़िया उडलकु तेवियान सक्ति एड़किन्द्र इन द अप्पन नाडिकिन्द्र इन राल इन द लाइफ फोर्स नंबर उल्ला वायकर विद इदे न उनवाह उठकोल्लम बोरुद द लाइफ फोर्स वंदु नाम नम्मल एड़त्तु कोल्किन्द्र आधे जीरनेकिन्द्र इन द प्रोसेसल एन नाडिकद अब्दीन नम्मा उडल वंदु इरकर उडल वंदु ओर चिन्न सिदाइव एयरपड़ीकिन्द्र ओर वैरंटर इन द प्रोसेसल नम्मलोड़िया उडल वंदु ओर चिन्न ओर वैरंटर सिदाइव एयरपड़ीकिन्द्र आदलाल नम्म नम्म उनवय उठकोल्लम बोरुद कोड नम्मलोड़िया उडल वंदु आदन मूलमाग सक्ति एड़किन्द्र अदेनयरतिल नम्म उडलुम अंदर सैयलिल उनवाह आदुम उठकोल्ला पढ़ीकिन्द्र एदि इधि वंदु ओर तू वे प्रोसेस उडल उनवय
Thodrapu eerppadum porudhu Namudiyasakthi andha avarhalal grahikka padigindradu. Adheponrue Naam valumiyaa irundha, valumiyaa arukku porudhu Machtrakal vandhu veekaa irunnaang abdina Indha valumiyaa haillavarkal vandhu, the balihinamaha ularulidhun, andha sakthi Valumiyana ulavarkalidham, ulavarkalidham poiseere hindradu. The sakthiin paramatravandhu thodranthir nadebittakoodi erikkindradu. Enna karunabdina, ellaratte orayamare sakthi erkardudile. Oru veekaarakram oru strong amitpannabodhu, the strongaarakram enna padhranga, andhveekaarakoni sakthi fulla angapaidudhu. Idhu vandhu parasparan nandakoodi varukidhu, continuous interchange. Thodarchiyanavara sakthiin paramatrmaaga nadeberikindradu. So idanmoolamagum oru the sakthiin, andha sakthiin kuraidal eerpadigindradu. Munraavdaha, the life force vandhu Ennetrasailgalil namuludiy odalil vandhu, adhyatthanu utpaduthikolikindradu. Digestion, spreading, going out, narey sailgalan seyirum, saakkudrum, Oda, oda, undhunavai jeeranikindrum, sailgalil edupadigindrum, idhumari number of operations. Ippavandhu indha sailgalil vandhu, oru imbalance, adav sakthiye salavadikartukum, sakthiye mindumpiruvatharkum idaili Oru sama seerattranilai, adhu dhanandhi imbalance. Imbalance, otthisayvattranilai, idhu eerpadum porudhu, enna nadeberikittadindhal, oru disturbance, Odalil vandhu disturbance varikindradu, oru samachseerattranilai eerpadigindradu, adhanal vyadi varikindradu. Adhal indha harmony to be restored, otthisayvanambavandhu mindump konandada, Andhodal vandhu seresayya padigindradu. Idhu oru nilai, naa, kadasiya ha, enna oru mukkimanakaruthi inga korappadigindradu enraal? The sakthiin paramatravandhu, the prabanjathilulla andhvaarvin sakthiikkum, Thanippatta amaypillulla andhvaarvin sakthiikkum idaili, thodarchiaga andh sakthiin paramatrav Narandukoodi erikkindradu. Adhaliyavandhu oru otthisayvattranilai eerpadum porudhu, enna nadeberikindradu enraal? Silesamayenambavandhu, namuludiy asain karunamagho, unrayadevindam inkinrad karunamagho, Illa oru ambition, idhalala enna sayikindrum enraal? Naam vandhu namudiy sakthiye vandhu teevake adhigam salavadikindrum. Andhalavukka naam prabanjathilirundhu mindump, adhay petru puthipithukolvadhi illai. Appurudhum indha imbalance eerpadigindradu. Adhalal, the imbalance, disharmony, idhu ellameedha irudhil eerpadigindradu, adhanmoolamaga Andh amaypill oru sidavi eerpadigindradu, adhanmoolamaga maranam eerpadigindradu, vyadi varikindradu, maranam eerpadigindradu. Anadha vandhu, mother vandhu remba azagasolirukkanga. Ella illnessakkume karunavandhu nambeetha pona sessionlla patho, ella illnessakkume adikpadaikkarunam Disharmony indha, ambar physical system. Namadha harmonyavandhu konvandutto abdina, namuludiy odalil vandhu, andh ellavidamana baadhipum, Indh sidavi vandhu nambo vandhu tadukkamudiyum, appdingerakaruthu pona varumam patho, Adhey karuthu dhaningam koripadapadigindradu. Nambe vandhu paragraph seven kullapollanam.
Paragraph seven. Not only so, but again, in the language of the Upanishad, the life force is the food of the body and the body, the food of the life force. In other words, the life energy in us both supplies the material by which the form is built up and constantly maintained and renewed and is at the same time constantly using up the substantial form of itself which it thus creates and keeps in existence. If the balance between these two operations is imperfect or disturbed or if the ordered play of the different currents of life force is thrown out of gear then disease and decay intervene and commence the process of disintegration and the very struggle for conscious mastery and even the growth of mind make the maintenance of the life more difficult. For, there is an increasing demand of the life energy on the form, a demand which is in excess of the original system of supply and disturbs the original balance of supply and demand and before a new balance can be established, many disorders are introduced, inimical to the harmony and to the length of maintenance of the life. In addition, the attempt at mastery creates always a corresponding reaction in the environment which is full of forces that also desire fulfillment and are therefore intolerant of revolt against and attack the existence which seeks to master them. There too, a balance is disturbed, a more intense struggle is generated. However, however strong the mastering life unless either it is unlimited or else succeeds in establishing a new harmony with its environment. It cannot always resist and triumph but must one day be overcome and disintegrated.
Thank you very much sir, thank you.
Thank you sir.
First part of explanation pollanampad.
Sir, padikittinlan sir.
Ah, pading madam please.
Upanishad says, life force is the food of the body, the body is the food of the life force. Life energy in us supplies the material by which the form is built up and constantly maintained and renewed. At the same time, the life energy is constantly using up the substantial form of itself which it thus creates and keeps in existence. The disease and decay set in and the process of disintegration starts when the balance between the two operations is imperfect or if the order play of the different currents of life force is thrown out of gear. Again, the very struggle for the conscious mastery and the growth of mind make the maintenance of the life more difficult.
Thank you very much madam, thank you, thank you. The life force is the food of the body and the body, the food of the life force. In other words, the life energy in us both supplies the material by which the form is built up and constantly maintained and renewed and is at the same time constantly using up the substantial form of itself which it thus creates and keeps in existence.
Upanishathilla enna koripadapadigindradu enraal? Nambe erkanave patham mari. Life force vandhu, namudiy odalin unavaga painbadigindradu. Adheponrue, namudiy odal, in the life force, pranasakthi, adharkunavaga painbaduthapadigindradu. Pranasakthi, adhanmoolamaga, adhanmoolamagathan naam, the unavai perigindrum, namuludiy odal vandhu unavai perigindradu. Adheponrue, the pranasakthi namodalai unavaga painbaduthikolikindradu. Indha life energy, idhu vandhu, andh teeviyana adharkana andh porulai, indh uruvathirkku varanikindradu. Adheponrue, andh life energy dhanvandhu, namudiy odalai vandhu paramarikindradu. Namuludiy odalai vandhu, adhu dhan puthipikkindradu. Life energy dhanvandhu, adhanmoolamagathan vandhu, namuludiy odal undakkavatharkana andh porulai, adhu dhan varanikindradu, adhay paramarikindradu, adhay puthipikkindradu. Adharkutteeviyana moolakkurugalai. Adhey samayathilla, indh life energy thodarchiaga, andh, andh, andh uruvathayum, thanubyavithikolikindradu. Appurudhu dhanvandhu, adhanudiyasailbadu thodarchiaga nadevaro. Anala, idhu vandhu oru parasparam, eer, para life energy, odalakkum, indh life energy vaarvin andh sakthiikkum idaili thodarchiaga parasparam nadeberum oru nigarvaaga idhu, nadak, nadakindradu. Indha disease and decay. The noi, apramvandhu odal sidainthu, odalin sidavi. Idhu eerpadigindradu. Indh odalin, andh angangalnu dey, odalin bahangalnu dey, indh arivu, adhanudiy sidavi vandhu, aarambikkidhu, epurudhu aarambikkidhu enraal? Indh ee rendu sailbadukalakkum idaili, oru sama nilai, adhu vandhu sama nilai kolayum porudhu, the odalil vandhu, noi undakindradu, odalil sidavi eerpadigindradu enrakaruthi inga, Bhavan koripadikindrar. Alladhu, life force abdingeradhu, oru oozingil sailbadum oru sakthi. Adhu vandhu, oru oozingattranilaiyil, adhu vandhu sailbadum porudho, indh nilaiyil eerpadudhu, eerpadigindradu enrakaruthi Bhavan koripadikindrar. Adhu epriyabdina? Oru yedayime vandhu excessa nambo vandhu vaarkaila sail, oru vaarkaila sailbadto abdina, oru normal operations of life, flairkavarkum, prachinakadayaadu. Silebeer vandhu vaarkaila patho abdina, oru excessivea ellathilime pannavanga. Excessive sailbadum porudhu ennaavudhu abdina? Oru vaarvin sakthi vandhu oru oozingana, oru oozingapadutha murayiladha, adhu amikka pattuladhu. Andh orderanambo disturb pannam porudhu, enna nadakindradu enraal? Idhu mari, indha imbalance nadakindradu. Adhanaladha, mother enna solvanga abdina, ellathilime balance venu abdina. Yediyadavun nambe excessa pannanu abdina, unga odalil vandhu imbalance vandhurum abdina. As seriyana murayil orakkam, rest, adequate rest, apram adequate, sa, nallav unavai utkoldhal, apram veelaki, odalku vandhu exercise. Seriyana, seriyana murali exercise pannradu. Idhumari, oru samasirnilaiyilla anithi ekkankalum, amayum porudhu dha, idhu imbalance varadu. Adhay dhan Bhavan inga koripadikindrar. The currents, the, the, Bhavan inga enna koripadikindrar enraal? If the ordered play of the different currents of life force is thrown out of gear. Enna artabdina? Nambe ella vaarkailarikkarayella sailimie nambo vandhu, oru, adhikne oru, oru balanceka, andh, oru sari vikhitthal nambe sailbadum porudhu, prachinakadayaadu. Yediyadavun nambe excessa pannam porudhu dha, inga problem varudhu abdingeradu, adhu dhan inga Bhavan koripadikindrar. Idhu vandhu annay vandhu, amgu sashramathilla kadibiruthikanga, sariyana, oru, oru vandhu nallav orangavendum. Anya veerli mee excessa sayekkadaadu, adhu excessa senjum abdina, adhal odalil vandhu, oru sidavi eerpadum. Odalikkondhi exercise teevay padigindradu. Analadha, ellarami mothasadaharal kodha, the order payirtikundhu mukkya, adhyam mukkathum kuddathanga. Nallasathullu unarvai ulleva, unavai ullevendum. Ingay vandhu namba ashramathilla yaarukkume, indha, indha purunayavathilla, indha, indha, virudhanarikradu, odalai varuthikolvadu, inge edhumie amgu vandhu recommend padradu kadiyadu. Adhalan vandhu exercises, Bhavan solikindrarade, adhalan exercises tha. Adhu vandhu, oru koripittla, silebeer vandhu oru veerlikvandhu fasting irpanga, adhu healthy habit. Remba, remba naalike oru, thodranthir naal, rendu, munaal irkindradu. Idhumari oru exercisesa pokkum, excessla, adhyaya oru miraminchanilaiyil pokkum porudhu dha, it creates an imbalance in the body, enrak Bhavan koripadikindrar. Adheponrue, indha, edhu vandhu oru, th, indha, indha oru samasirattranilaiyil sayibadum porudhu, namuludiy odal enna sayikindradu, odal, namuludiy life force vandhu, andh samasirnilaiyai vandhu, seresayya myersikindradu, conscious mastery. Adhu vandhu oru porattamaaga amikindradu, enrak Bhavan koripadikindrar. Idh ellameedha vandhu, indh odalin nu dey, andh sidaviyikka karunamaga amikindradu. Enginradu karunaththi Bhavan koripadikindrar.
Aduttha part of explanation pollanma?
What is the question sir?
Ah, pading, padinga please.
Why the disintegration of form of life takes place? There is an increasing demand of the life energy on the form. This demand always exceed the original system of supply. This disturb the original balance of supply of demand. It takes time for the new balance to be restored. In the meantime, this imbalance leads to many disorders opposed to the harmony and the length of maintenance of life. In addition to that, the life organizing the body is in constant struggle to sustain itself. It always attempts to master the forces with which it is in conscious interaction. This attempt at mastery over forces creates always a corresponding reaction in the environment. The environment is full of forces that also desire fulfillment. Therefore, they are intolerant of and opposed to the existence. They attack the existence which seeks to master them. Here again, the balance is disturbed. More intense struggle is generated. However strong the mastering life, it has to be unlimited or it has to succeed in establishing a new harmony with its environment. Otherwise, it cannot always resist and triumph. It must one day be overcome and disintegrated. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you very much. There is an increasing demand of the life energy on the form, a demand which is in excess of the original system of supply and disturbs the original balance of supply and demand and before a new balance can be established, many disorders are introduced, inimical to the harmony and to the length of maintenance of the life, enrak oru mukkimanakaruthi Bhavan koripadikindrar. Ee, en vandhu, the sidavi undahavendam, why disintegration of form should take place? Indha keelvi, eerikindradu. Indha...
Vaarvu vandhu, oru uruvathai saarundhu irkindradu, life energy, namudiy body, idhai saarundhu dhan irkindradu. The life energy vandhu, adhanudiy, andh teevay vandhu, the vadivathin, edan, edanulla adhu irkindradu, andh vadivathin midu, adhanudiy teevay epurudhumie adhimaga irkindradu. The demand of the life energy on the form, idhu epurudhumie oru, eyermogamaga than irkindradu. The demand vandhu, andh supply, adhik supplyoda, the demand kodakindradu. Ee, ippe kodakidhu enna, nambe erkanave patho, oru, indha, enna karunathanaala, idhumari epurudhumie, the life energy nu dey, demand jasiyarku, supply vandhu kamiaarku. Enna karunam, abdingeradu, yosikinno. Idhu vandhu Bhavan vandhu, oru rendu, muna, paragraph munadiye, solirukkara, pona chapterli solirukkara, enna solirukkara abdina? Life energy, abdingeradu, basically chitsakthi, idhu prabanjathilla niravi uladu. Adhanmoolamaga, adhanmoolamaga than naam, uyirvaargindrum, namudiy, the odalin ginrad amayipum, adhanmoolamaga than, adhu dhan, adhu dhan molesakthiaga namakkhu, the sakthiye alikindradu. Anal, naam adhay neeradiyaga petru kolvadhi illai. Adhay naam, maraimogamaga indirect, maraimogamaga than perigindrum. Evvari enraal, naam yedavu, andh, andh life force, ulle unavahayalai unkkundu, adhanmoolamaga, nam andh sakthiye perigindrum. Tavaranan, tavaranan, tavaranandhar vegetables, kayharigale utkoldhikindrum. Maamisathin moolamaga, ereyatal, idhu, idhu rentemie vandhu, the life force, idhu vandhu, adhanulla adaggyuldana. Tha, andh vegetables, pramata products, animal products, idhanmoolamaga, naam, indh, andh sakthiye perigindrum. Idhu anithame vandhu, maraimogamaga, naam petru kolnum sakthi. Naam neeradiyaga andh peruvadhi illai. Adhanaladha, vandhu, indh, andh supply and demand kulla, indha, imbalance varikindradu. Silebeer kundhu remba, the, sile yogiakalakka, andh, andh sakthi vandhu, neeradiyaga andh prabanjathillirundhu, the sakthiye petru kolnum tirami yogiakalakkundu. Mother vandhu solirukkanga, avungaludiy, andh odalin sakthiin teeviyai vandhu, the universal vital force, prabanjasakthiin moolamaga than na, aver, perumalavu petru koldar enbadhi, koripittolarkal. The unavu vandhu remba, remba kamiaadha, amgu eduthupanga. Ourudiy odalin sakthiin teevay anithame, andh prabanjasakthiin moolamaga, neeradiyaga petru kolnum tirami avargalakkundu. Anal, sadhana manudhiralka, andh, andh, andh tiramikadayaadu. Naam maraimogamaga than, indh vaarvin sakthi, ulle unavupurukkaliyundu, adhanmoolamaga, maraimogamaga perigindrum. Adhanaladha, andh, there is a gap between the supply and demand. Andh balance vandhu orudharu eerdhittu abdina, adha mindump, adha, andh sama nilaiyekonduvatharka sirudhikaalam pidikkindradu. Indh edaipatte kaalathilla dhan vandhu, the samasirattranilai eerpadigindradu. Idhu vandhu, palveer oozinginangalakku, bali vahakindradu, disorders. Manavodu, odalil vandhu oru otthisayvattra pohinradu. Vaarvai paramarikka modivadhi illai, enginradu karuthi inga Bhavan koripadikindrar. Adhu mattu malaa, indh vaarvu, nam odalakkulli irkindradu, adhu vandhu, thani paramaritthukollai epurudhumie, poradikkundu dhan irkindradu. Adhu vandhu oru smooth process kadiyadu. Ee enraal, the vaarvu enbadhu, bebeyaru sakthigal, adh suddhri sailbadum bebeyaru sakthigal, adharudan, thodarchiyanap, thodarchiyanan, oru paramatrathillirikindradu. Appri pannabodhu enna vana, andh sakthigalai idhu, thanudiy aadumai kul, konduvaru myersikindradu. Indh myerschi, the, thani suddhriyulla sakthi galmeedhu, aadumai kolvadil, eerpai, kolvadarkaha, indh, adharkana myerschi enna, enna, oru edhurvelavu, pinvelavu eerpaduthikindradu enraal? Andh suttrupura soochnilaiyil, andh soochnilaiyil, oru edhurvelavu eerpaduthikindradu. This attempt at mastery over forces creates always a corresponding reaction in the environment. Oru edhurvelavu eerpaduthikindradu. Ee enraal, the environment vandhu, it is also full of forces, narey sakthi galirkindran. Avaygalum, thanudiy teevagali purthisayvatharkaha, virehindran. Avaygalam enna sayikindradu enraal, indh thanippatta vaarvu, adharkuvandhu, edharaavaygalam sailbadikindran. Indh, avaygalam enna sayikindradu enraal, andh thanippatta vaarvin ginrad amaypai, thanudiy aadumaiyinkonduvatharkaha myersikindran. Idh ellameedha vandhu, oru akkalti levella, subtle levella nadakkoodiyadu. Ultimate nambo vandhu vyadiyinkara, oru, idhu dhan nambo membokka pakarom. Anav oru manudhirak vyadi varathakunnadi, ivaygal dhan nadeberikindran. Ivayal, indh subtle planele nadakindradu, nuunniyathalathil, nuupamana, andh talangali nadeberikindradu. Indh, indh, indh nigarvagal, oru subtle planele nadakkoodiya, amshangal. Anam, namal, namal, idhay unaramadivadhi illai, anal, idhu dhan vandhu, the oru thanippatta oru amayipirkum, vediyilula andh purasakthi galakkum, idaili vandhu eerpadum paramatrav, oru samasirattranilai uruvakikindradu. Idhu oru karunam, enrak Bhavan koripadikindrar. Indh, 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 indh porattathilla vandhu enna nadakindradu enraal? Indh struggle, kattinuv struggle erkrudhu. Andh vaarvai vandhu than vasapaduthavendu, appdinger, appdinger, oru, appdinger, oru kattinuv struggle vandhu, ovvaru thanippattajeevanakkum, naranduk, thanippattajeevanakkullam narandukoodi erikkindradu. Idh la vandhu, idhu vandhu, oru, oru kattathila modiyadu, enrak Bhavan koripadikindrar. Enna dhan vandhu, andh thanippatta vaarvu vandhu, andh vaarvai, than aadumaiyil konduvaru myerschittalum, modiyadu. Ee, modiyadu enraal, oru kaalakattathila adhu vandhu, andh edhursakthi galakka than, eyreyaagathan vendup. Edhanal enraal, adhu vandhu oru thanippattamaypu. Adhu vandhu oru unlimited forceaa irkada varikum, oru limited adavula sailbadum oru sakthiaga thanippattamaypaha irkindrar varikum. Indh, indh edhirkolum sakthi gali, adhanal, moru aadumaiyil kird, konduvara, modiyadu. Enrak karuthi Bhavan koripadikindrar. Oru, oru, oru kaalakattathil, it, it must one day be overcome and disintegrated. Enna karunavandhu, indh sakthiin paramatrav thodanthi narandukoodi erikkindradu. Oru kaalakattathila, the thanippattamaypu enbadhu, indh thani suddhriyulla sakthi galakku, keel, adhu vandhu oru, adhanal, vettrikolnapadum. Adhan, adhan karunamaga, the sidavi eerpadikindradu, enrak karunaththi koripadikindrar. Adipadale enna karunavabdina, the thanippattamaypu enbadhu, oru limiteda irkradhanaladha, ellathikum karunam. Idhu dhan, ikkima Bhavan koripadakkoodu, adh karuthu.
Sir, inderathilla, idhik, konja samandappattadu, anna vandhu, adhiguma vandhu, adharu samandappadhan, solonam badiyadu. Idha, mother, the, Satpramadhiya, agenda la koripadathundhu, sir. Adh solanam ma?
Please solum sir.
Adavu, Satpramoda mother peesindruthanga, oru naal, peesindruthukum porudhu, adh, andh iravaneram aanadhu, oru, eight mani, andh maadiyara, oru nelam. Andh nerathilla, mother vandhu peechaniruthivittu, iru, abdina, sahikam choodutti, konjaran, abdina, transkulla poi, amgu, irkanga. Apram, again, thirimpii, vandhu vadan, enna, abdina, sile, sir, Supreme kerkum porudhu, illa, subtle levella poi, subtle physicalla, naam poi, vela sayivandhi indhadu, yaaroyanna kuupittarkal. Anal, naam poi vela sayiduthan, abdina, soli, sir. Naaliki ni vandhu ashramathilla kettupari, yaarkaun, remba seriesa, odambu, sarilamakoi, unni ayatharadhaan, konjikittupari, abdina, soli. Abh, sonna vadan, apram peechu thodakindradu. Marnal, aver, Satpram vandhu, adhina poi kakkala, but generala, parkum porudhu, andh mari, edhumie, yaarmi, seriesa arundhu, andh mari indradu, la, onnon, teriila. Appam, mother traver, vandhu, marnal solumbadhu, mother solranga, oh, everything in the subtle level, abdina, solitte, amma, andh adavu, they, amgu, dey, call, amgu, kundhu, odamsarilam, porudhanda, dhanam, amgu, teringe, they called her, and never was. And she was in the room. Immediately, the mother knew that They were on the level. Before the attack of the plague I went there. But they did not know. But I was there. The mother's intervention was there. I want to share this.
Very good. Excellent. Paragraph eight.
Yes, sir. Paragraph eight. But Apart from all these necessities There is the one fundamental necessity Of the nature and object of embodied life itself Which is to seek infinite experience On a finite basis. And since the form The basis by its very organization limits The possibility of experience. This can only be done By dissolving it And seeking new forms. For the soul Having once limited itself By concentrating On the moment and the field Is driven to seek its infinity Again by the principle of succession By adding moment to moment And thus Storing up A time experience Which it calls its past. In that time It moves through successive fields Successive experiences or lives Successive accumulations of knowledge Capacity Enjoyment And all this It holds in subconscious Or superconscious memory As its fund of past acquisition in time. To this process Change of form is essential. And for the soul involved in individual body Change of form means Dissolution of the body In Subjection to the law And compulsion Of the all life In the material universe To its law of supply Of the material of form And demand on the material To its principle Of constant intershock And the struggle of the embodied life To exist In a world of mutual devouring. And this is the law of death.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Explanation. Part number.
Part number one.
Part number one.
Mangai Pudding.
Thank you. There is one more reason for the destruction of form. The life in the body seeks infinite experience on a finite basis. This is the fundamental necessity of the nature and object of form-bound life. Object of form-bound life. The basis of very organization of forms Limits the possibility of this experience of infinity. Therefore, the only possibility is By dissolving it and seeking new forms. The soul, as we know Has limited itself by concentrating on the moment and field. Prajna, third status of the supermind Is driven to seek its infinity Again by the principle of succession. Thus, by adding moment to moment And thus stores up a time experience Which it calls its past. In that time It moves through successive fields Successive experiences or lives Successive accumulation of knowledge Capacity and enjoyment. All this it holds In subconscious or superconscious memory As its resource gathered out of past acquisition in time. To enable this process Change of form is essential. For the soul involved in individual body Change of form means dissolution of body. This happens in subjection To the law and compulsion of all life in the material universe To its law of supply of the material form And demand on the material To its principle of constant interstock shock And the struggle of the embodied life To exist in a world of mutual devouring, feeding. This is the law of death. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There is one fundamental necessity of the nature and object of Embodied life Itself Which is to seek infinite experience On a finite basis. And since the form The basis By its Since and since the form The basis by its very organization Limits the possibility of experience. This can only be done by dissolving it And seeking new forms. For the soul Having once limited itself by concentrating on the moment And the field is driven to seek its infinity again By the principle of succession. This is what God asks.
The previous paragraph. This imbalance. The life energy. Our body. This is a process. This is a process. The second. This is a process. This is a process. This body is required. This is a process. The third. The body. The environmental forces. That is why the body is required. This body is required. This body is required. This body is required. This is the reason. This is what God asks. Why A body is used? This is what God asks. Why? This body is a a a a a a Life Life in the body seeks infinite experience. Infinite experience is a a a But it is a process. On a finite basis. Because the body is a finite object. On a finite object. What is the reason? Infinite experience. A body is used. It is used. This is a need. This is a need. This body is required. This body is required. This is what God asks. The organization of form. This body. This is a process. This This is a process. This is a process. Because our body is a process. It is a process. This is a process. Because our organization is like this. Our body is required. This is a process. This body is a a a This is a process. This is a process. This is a process. This is a process. This is the reason. The second. The peace. The peace is individualized. Concentrating on the moment and the field. Exclusive concentration. Because it is a process. God has said. Creation. Multiplicity. The nature. The nature. This divine mind Apprehending consciousness. Prajna. The nature. Exclusive concentration. This is the reason. This is the reason. This is the reason. This body. A exclusive concentration. A the moment and field. In this world In this world A This is Your government Body is required. Again, this is a process. This is a process. This is a process. But this peace is required. This is a process. This is the same problem. A body is in a process. This peace is not required. So what is the reason? It is a process. It is a process. This is a process. This is succession. Principle of succession. This body is a process. This 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 is a process. This is a capacity and enjoyment. This is all a peace. This is a process. 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 This is what God asks. This is a process. This 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 Change of form. This is a process. This is a process. A body is required. Change of form. This change of form. What is it? Dissolution of body. This body is required. This is a process. Because it is a process. So whether it is in a process or in a body it is required. This is a process. This is This is a process. This is a process. Universal life. All life. One is individual life. The other is universal life. This is the reason. Because This body This This body is required. This is a process. This A a a This body is This is a process. This is a process. This 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 is what God asks. So this is the reason. This is the life force. Life force is Life in the body. This is a process. 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 This is the reason.
Rangarajin.
Yes, sir.
This My wife Vivekananda She is 36 years old. Her brother She said, "I am only 3 years old." "After that, I will go to the hospital." She said. "Why do you say that?" "I don't understand." She said. "Why do you say that?" "Because I have a big life." "It is a stage." "But after that, I will die." "So I will die automatically." She said. "You can't say that." "Because you are 36 years old." "Do you understand?" "Why do you say that?" "Vivekananda, you are born today."
Yes.
"Today is his birthday." "He is very happy." "He has talked about it." "He has taught it." "He eats very well." "After that, he talks." "They are all talking." "Because this is my last speech." "After that, he left his body." "Like what you said." "The life expansion." "The form cannot hold." "The body is universal." "That is why they are alive." "Microcosm is the body." "Microcosm is our body." "Microcosm is the body." "What is Vivekananda's opinion?"
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Mama, I have one question.
Yes.
Now, all of this, Allah has discussed, it is not just for the human life, right? But it is for the entire universe.
Entire form, all forms.
So, so, I don't know why, when I am reading this, when, when we are going through this section and everything, I, I just now, we have all elephant in the room, the virus mutation, transformations and all. Those things are also bound by this law, whatever Allah is explaining.
That is, this is how, how, how? We have seen the two. Forces inside, forces inside, constantly changing interest. A four autumn is happening. Now, the virus, this is all, they are, they represent the forces. Viruses, we have said, even they talk about it. They represent the forces from the vital plane. Vital plane, there are uh, vital worlds, there are the forces, that is, how to use it directly? So, that is the virus, the spirit. The individual life forms, it is the damage. That is what Allah has said. This constant interchange between individual life and the forces which are outside. The forces are outside, we have said. Constantly attacking, on the existence level. Uh, the thought, the thought. To manage it, there is no problem. To manage it, lose the balance, the private bodies. Uh, they give up and the form has to be destroyed.
Hmm. Thank you. Mama, the prajna is the third status of supermind. And you have said before.
That is, supermind, uh, Satchidananda is the spirit, all of us have the spirit. Satchidananda is infinite, by nature, it is infinite. By nature, it is unity, unity, infinity. Uh, this is the basic nature of the supermind. But the creation, if it is infinite, one, one, there is finite, uh, level, finite status. Creation cannot be made. Yeah? That is, if you are one, you are one. Creation is not, creation is multiplicity. So, what is the principle? If a dead body, an intermediary force is needed. That is the supermind, supermind, the entire universe is created. Supermind, it is a part of Satchidananda, Satchidananda is its part. Supermind, what is it? It is made, made, made. First, the Satchidananda, a narrow, a narrow, a narrow, unity, infinity. This is the first status. Supermind's basic first status. Comprehending consciousness. The next level, the next, the second, the third level is the knowledge. The second level, the third level. The knowledge, what is happening? The supermind, what is it doing? The bodies, 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 bodies. Your body, your body. A body, a body. The power of the Lord, the power of the Lord. The third status, what is happening? Your body, the power of the Lord, is manifested. That is, the knowledge is very dominant. Knowledge, there is the first status, one is the dominant factor. The second status, one is, multiplicity is there. The third status, multiplicity is dominant. There is a exclusive concentration on the bodies, one is on the side. We are all in this knowledge. Because we are all, we are, 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 we are. That is why we are exclusively concentrated. That is the third level, knowledge. That is the principle, the private hearts. Private bodies, a self limited basis. Your body is a body, a body. But basically, the soul's nature is, it is a part of infinity. All of this, all of this world, it is a part of infinity, unity. That is, it is impossible for any body to do it. That is why, other bodies, the mercy of God, your body, the mercy of God. This is all, Allah has seen.
Okay, okay.
Number, please.
Paragraph nine.
Nine, I am going to. Yes, please. Um, paragraph nine.
Okay. Paragraph nine. This then is the necessity and justification of death. Not as a denial of life, but as a process of life. Death is necessary because eternal change of form is the soul immortality to which the finite living substance can aspire and eternal change of experience. The soul infinity to which the finite mind involved in living body can attain. This change of form cannot be allowed to remain merely a constant renewal of the same form type such as constitutes our body, bodily life between birth and death. For unless the form type is changed and the experiencing mind is thrown into new forms in new circumstances of time, place and environment. The necessary variation of experience which the very nature of existence in time and space demands cannot be effectuated. And it is only the process of death by dissolution and by the devouring of life by life. It is only the absence of freedom, the compulsion, the struggle, the pain, the subjection to something that appears to be not self which makes this necessary and salutary change, salutary change appear terrible and undesirable to our mortal mentality. It is the sense of being devoured, broken up, destroyed or forced away which is the sting of death and which even the belief in personal survival of death cannot wholly abrogate.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you. Explanation, we are going to. Meera, madam, read. You are going to read.
Yes, sir, read. We have seen in the previous paragraph that there is necessity of life to seek infinite experience on a finite basis and for soul to seek infinity by the principle of succession. This is the necessity and justification of death. Not as a denial of life, but as a process of life. The finite living substance aspires for the soul immortality through eternal change of form. The finite mind involved in the living body aspires for soul infinity through eternal change of experience. For these reasons, death becomes necessary. This change of form cannot remain merely a constant renewal of same form type that exists between our birth and death. The form type has to be changed. The experiencing mind has to be thrown into new forms in new circumstances of time, place and environment. Only then, the necessary variation of experience which the very nature of existence in time and space demands can be made possible. What makes this necessary and beneficial change appear terrible and undesirable to our human mind? It is the process of death by dissolution. By eating of life by life. It is the absence of freedom, the compulsion, the struggle, the pain, that subjection to something that appears to be not self. We may have belief that personally we can survive death by rebirth. Even this belief cannot do away with the sense of being devout, broken up, destroyed or forced away which is the sting of death. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, madam, thank you. Till then, this then is the necessity and justification of death. Not as a denial of life, but as a process of life. Death is necessary because eternal change of form is the soul immortality to which the finite living substance can aspire and eternal change of experience. The soul infinity to which the finite mind involved in living body can attain. The most important truth is. This change of form cannot be allowed to remain merely a constant renewal of the, of the same form type such as constitutes our bodily life between birth and death. We have seen the paragraph. What we have seen, that is a many experiences. A private, 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 private. That is, a private, 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 private. A private, private, private. Change of the spirit. The the body, the body. That is, the body, the body. Because all of us, all of us, all of us, all of us. Because all of us have to do it. Infinity. Infinity is the finite. Bodies are there, that is, the body is a unity. This is, all bodies, bodies, life force, heart, heart.
So, the life force is one of the 88 experiences and the infinite experience is one of the experiences that the experiences are required for the immortal. How to justify the memory? If you don't see the story of the war, it is a process of the war. The war is the reason why the need for the memory is necessary. The need for the memory is because of the story of the war. It is a process of life, the God says. A finite living substance, its nature is to be required for the self-creation. How to create a self-creation? It is the need for the experiences to be created. Immortality is the need for the experiences. Therefore, the finite mind, a finite body, a finite body, a body, is looking at it and thinks it is the infinity, the infinite. It is required for the experience. Therefore, it is required for the experiences. These two reasons make the memory necessary. The most important point is the change of form. If you don't create it in the same body, the change of form cannot remain merely a constant renewal of the same form type that exists between our birth and death. Why? The experiencing mind is experiencing the experiences. Therefore, the mind is changing the experiences, changing the experiences, changing the hours, the days, the experiences. Therefore, it is the experiences that are created. Therefore, the variation of experience is created. Therefore, it is possible to create the experiences in different ages. This is one reason. When it is there, we see it as a memory. It is one of the memories that the memory is about. However, the mind is a very painful. It is not required for the memory. Why it is required? The God has a light. When the memory is happening, the body is destroying. The body is destroying the body. Therefore, we are in a silent state. We are in a silent state. We are in a state of a spiritual state. We are in a state of a spiritual state. We are achieving the right path. Therefore, the memory is not required for the mind. Even the mind is not required. Why is it not required? Because I am not able to achieve it. Even if I am not able to achieve it, the destroying of the body, destroying of the body, is the sting of death, the God says. The sting of death. How does the poison have a taste? Is it a taste of the food? Is it a taste of the food? The destroying of the body is the taste of the food. Therefore, he is not required for the mind. The memory is not required. Therefore, he is not able to achieve it.
Mama, just remember one thing.
Yes.
Permanent Tatha was telling about that when Ramalakshmi Parvam sir, when he is about to die, he gave away all the things he acquired. Spiritual power and everything. He transferred our kind of thing to Swami. Vivekananda and he said, "I am now dying as nothing." He said, "Because of his spirituality, all the things he learned, he has transferred." He said, "I will die."
Yes, true. It is true. It is true. Whatever spiritual acquisitions are, all the wishes of our ancestors are transferred to Vivekananda. Then he destroyed the body. Ramakrishna Parvam sir. True. Paragraph 10, Poluma.
Yes, sir.
A little clarification.
Yes, sir. Please, madam.
This is a standard, ordinary mind. Yogas are not like that, sir.
It is not like that.
It is like that.
It is ordinary mind. He uses a word. I will read that word, then you will understand. Okay? And it is only the process of death by dissolution and by the devouring of life by life, it is only the absence of freedom, the compulsion, the struggle, the pain, the subjection to something that appears to be not self, which make this necessary and salutary change appear terrible and undesirable to our mortal mentality. Mortal mentality is ordinary mind. It is not like that. They do not have consciousness. Their consciousness is in the body. The body is not the body. I am the Jeevatman. I am the true soul. They are always identified with their soul. They do not exist. We are always identified with our bodies. They are always identified with their soul, with the true being. Therefore, they do not have consciousness.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
In fact, many yogas have willingly courted death. They have willingly courted death. But mothers say very nicely. How to look at death? They say very nicely. I brought a material. I will spend 10 minutes on it. What is the essence of death? Death should be required. Nobody should aspire for death. Nobody should aspire for it. You should not aspire to death. Because in life we are alive. The real progress you can make only when you live. Why? At the moment somebody dies, till he is reborn, there is a period of, there is a gap. At the gap, the psychic being takes simply rest. At the period, the psychic being does not undergo any progress. If it has to continue the process, again it has to take a body and then it has to continue the process. Therefore, the progress. Progress is possible only in the world as long as you live. Progress is possible only on this earth. Only then you can progress. When you die, you are forced to go to the grave. That is why my uncle, my uncle, my uncle, my uncle, unless there are very compelling reasons, they always want their disciples to live for a longer time and then so that they can progress. But once the death, if you have to face the death, face it with bold, with courage. You should not fear it. Nobody should desire death. You should not die. You should not die. We will take it up in some other session.
Sir, I want to add one more thing.
Yes.
In Bhagavatara, there is a discussion between Ekamalkya and his wife. I am the child of the earth. Even if you know everything, I will not die. If not, I will die. The question is, you have been always loved. You have been loved. I will tell you. I will say two sentences. A man who is loved is a man. 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 A man should walk with love. A man should ask for love. A man should learn. A man should know. A man who is scared of love, who is scared of love, who is scared of love, is all of them.
Correct, sir. This is what the God says. It's not for the sake of your wife you should love her, but for the sake of the soul in your, for the self in your wife you should love her. The God is a synthesis of yoga. Or is it a set of yoga? And the saying of Ekamalkya, the God is saying.
The God is saying.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Another quotation is very good, sir. The God says. Please, sir. I am saying, sir. I am saying. The God says, "What is this thing called, thou, what is this thing thou calls death? Can God die? Oh, thou who fearest death, it is life that has come to these poor things with your death head and wearing a mask of terror." Oh, okay. "Can God die?" Okay, okay.
You said a little contradiction. Maybe it's not contradiction. It looks to me, now we are, growth, growth is, sorry, progress is on the life. Now we are, we don't want another, another life. It's constant rebirth. That is the ultimate progress of spirituality.
Yes. It is not.
Rebirth.
Yes. It is traditional belief. Traditional belief. It is a tradition. People should be alive. We have heard in Tamil. We should be alive. We should not be alive. That is a old school of thinking. The God is, the God is not. We want to be born again and again and again. Why? Only then the evolution of consciousness can take place. Is it? Every evolution of consciousness happens. Only you have to be born again and again and again. So that one day you will become the superman. One day you will become the divine man in this world. You can lead a divine life. Our lives, our lives, whether we go to the temple, whether we go to the temple, we should change our world to a divine life. People have to be born again and again till such time they become super, super, super mental beings. Therefore, this is what the God says. This is the synthesis of yoga. How Vivekananda says, "I want to be born again and again. I want to take so many births so that I can, I can serve the divine in man." That is the reason why Vivekananda says. He quotes and the God is saying. Why is it not possible? We want to be born again and again and again so that we can evolve and become a divine human being. So, that is traditionally. You should not have it in your mind.
Very, very evolutionary and basically it is extension of the Darwin's theory of evolution that is for only the physical life. I think the God said that it is a transformation.
Yes. Because Darwinian scientific, that is the materialistic aspect. Material transformation is the evolution and the scientific Darwin theory explains. Whereas spiritual side of it, spiritual side of evolution, the God is saying. This is not done by anyone. You see, nobody has done it. This is again, divine, divine, in this lifetime, the mind is required. It is a stone that was smashed. Through C. Arbinder, that is. That is what we need. In this lifetime, the mind is required. That is why we need to take it. You should not die. You should not die. This is what we need.
Good morning. A woman who is a woman, she is a woman. What is the consequence of that?
I do not know, sir. She is a woman. What is the meaning of that? Frankly speaking, I do not know. I have not heard about the God and mother. My concentration is full. That is why I do not know. We are alive. We are alive. That is why spiritual matter is very, very small. Now we are alive. All are bought. All are spoon feed. The God is making it. I do not know. I am asking. But the truth is, I do not know. I do not know. Frankly speaking, I do not know. Okay, thank you.
Sir, what did you ask?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, please.
When she is a woman, when she is a woman, so when she is a dematerialist, she becomes a part of the light. When the light comes, the experience of Ramalingam is supplemental, but it is a part of the supplemental. Satpram is talking. There is an agenda. I do not know exactly. But it is there in an agenda. There is an agenda. It is part of the supplemental light. The mother is talking.
Yes. That is. Sir, another line, sir. When she is a woman, she changes the body and changes the memory. Why is it that the memory is a disaster? That is the line. That is correct. That is. She has blended the two sides of Satya G. V. Therefore, once she becomes a light, a light, then she is above death. The God is asking. The God is asking. How do two people, how do two people? The God is saying. One is Chaitanya Prabhu, the other is Ramalingam. The God is saying. What is it? Especially Ramalingam, the supplemental light, they saw. How is it? Supermental light. Yes, he has seen. But when they were brought to the earth, they became one with the light. But when they were, when they were the body, in the air atmosphere, they were brought to the earth. They were there. Because their yoga was done. They were seen. They blended the two sides. This is what I have heard. When a woman is a woman, maybe you are saying the time is right. When we see the truth in the story, they ask the time is right. I have not heard about it.
Music play, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.